Good evening. Welcome to the Timberlane Regional Budget Committee meeting. This is our public hearing on the 2020-2021 budget appropriations. Todd, cover your agenda real quick. Kathy, can you please call the roll?
I'll be calling the roll of the Budget Committee first. Peter Bielow.
Here.
Alan David.
Here.
David Gerns.
Here.
Kathleen Gorman.
Here.
Julie Hammond.
Here.
John Hughes.
Here.
Michael Mascola.
Here.
Todd McCormick.
Here.
Phil Sherwood. School Board members. Brian Boyle.
Here.
Lee Dubey.
Here.
Kim Farah.
Here.
Sheila Lowes.
Here.
Sarah Mockamore.
Here.
Sean O'Neil.
Here.
Kristin Savage.
Here.
Sue Sherman.
Here.
Jennifer Silva. Also seated with the Budget Committee and the School Board this evening are the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Earl Metzler, and CFO, Business Administrator, Jeff McGowan.
Thank you. So before I continue, I would just like to put out a note that one of our members on the Budget Committee, John Hughes, has submitted his resignation. He will be missed. It is effective tomorrow. I wanted to say to John, thank you so very much for all of your work on the Budget Committee. He was also on the Capital Improvement Plan Committee. He was on the Withdrawal Committee. John has pretty much attended every single one of our meetings. He has come prepared to our meetings, so just want to say thank you very much, John, for all your efforts, and you will be missed. With that being said, there are two years left on John's term. So Kathy Belcher, correct me if I'm wrong, but the SAU will be accepting names for all the positions that will be open for this year. And those dates are January 22 to January 31. So anybody who has an interest in a Budget Committee or a School Board position, this includes the vacancy that is also now left by John Hughes on the Budget Committee, please stop by the SAU during those dates. And I'm pretty confident that this information will also be on the school website. Thank you. So thank you, John. So here's the agenda for the evening. This is, I'm going to go over some of the meeting purpose and rules. The first and second sessions of our annual meeting include Article II of the Operating Budget, including a review of the Budget Process. Article III, we'll talk about the Capital Reserve Funds by Surplus. Article IV, Three-Year Collaborative Bargaining Agreement, Timberlane Support Staff Union. Article V, Authorization for a Special Meeting. Article VI, Middle School Roof Maintenance and Repair. Article VII, Withdrawal from SAU 55. Article VIII, General Acceptance of Reports. Article IX, Expendable Trust Fund for Withdrawal by Petition. Article X, Funding for Transition in Preparation for Withdrawal from SAU 55 by Petition of Rob Collins.
For the purpose of our public hearing...
Oh, I am so sorry. Let me take a quick pause here. My apologies. If, I want to go through the Pledge of Allegiance. If we can all take a moment's stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the purpose of this meeting tonight, it's our public hearing, to tell the community the process and how we formed the number that we're going forward with for our 2020-2021 budget to the public. It's for allowing public testimony and questions on the budget prior to finalization by the Budget Committee. After the public hearing, the Budget Committee will finalize the budget for presentation at the deliberative session, which will take place in February. Only Budget Committee members may make motions to change the budget at the public hearing. Some basic meeting ground rules. I'm going to ask if everybody can please silence their phone. If you're going to come up to the microphone in which to speak, please wait to be recognized before speaking. Please state your name and the town for the record. Please be respectful. There'll be plenty of difference of opinions, but let's be respectful. No profanity, personal attacks, no rudeness. Slanders remarks will not be tolerated. And I hope we don't have to get to the next one. Offenders will be asked to leave the meeting. Comments shall be limited to the topic at hand. Speakers will be allotted up to five minutes to make their statement. Allow those who have not spoken an opportunity to do so before offering additional comments. If you're returning to the microphone, it must be to discuss something new and not repetitive of previous comments. Lastly, the Chair reserves the right to discontinue comment on the topic in order to move the meeting along. Okay, so the first session. Can I get my notes here? Julie, so I'm going to have members of the Budget Committee read portions of this process here. So Julie, if you could read the first session of the annual meeting.
Sure. First session of annual meeting, deliberative. You are hereby notified to meet at the Timberlane High School, 36 Greenow Road, Plasda, New Hampshire, on Thursday, the 6th day of February 2020 at 7:00 PM. This session shall consist of explanation, discussion, and debate of warrant articles number two through number 10. Warrant articles may be amended, subject to the following limitations. A, warrant articles whose wording is prescribed by law shall not be amended. B, warrant articles that are amended shall be placed on the official ballot for a final vote on the main motion as amended. And C, no warrant article shall be amended to eliminate the subject matter of the article.
Julie, if you can please just continue with the second session.
Second session of annual meeting, voting. Voting on warrant articles number one through number 10 will be conducted by official ballot to be held in conjunction with town meeting voting to be held on Tuesday, the 10th day of March 2020, at the town election polls in Atkinson, Danville, Plasda, and Sandown, New Hampshire. Atkinson voting will be conducted at the Atkinson Community Center from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM. Danville voting will be conducted at the Danville Community Center from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Plasda voting will be conducted at Pollard School from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Sandown voting will be conducted at the Sandown Town Hall from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Thank you. Next on our list, Article II of the Operating Budget. John?
Article II, Operating Budget. Shall the voters of the Timberlane Regional School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amounts set for on the budget posted with the warrant are as amended by vote for the first, of the first session for the purposes of their fourth therein totaling Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be $72,174,779, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Timberlane Regional School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance to RSA 10:13, Roman numeral 10 and 16. To take up the issue, we'll revise operating budget only. Note, warrant Article II, the operating budget, does not include appropriations proposed under any other warrant articles. Majority vote required. Recommended by the School Board, 720.
Thank you. Next, we have the Budget Process. And for this, I'm going to turn to David Gerns.
The Budget Process. Developed in accordance with applicable New Hampshire statutes, RSA 32, 33, and 195. Corporation of the Committee's Mission Statement. The Budget Committee will develop a fiscally sound annual budget that will optimally meet the needs of the district by working with district personnel and consultation with the School Board. Throughout the Budget Process, the Budget Committee will take into consideration district tax matters, as well as supportive for staff rigor evaluation and accountability initiatives that drive student achievement. The Budget Process. Review the actual expenditures in prior years. Consideration for staffing and enrollment projections. Deliberation of capital improvements requested within the Capital Improvement Plan. Collaboration with administrators, department heads, teachers, and others.
Thank you. Next, we have the Budget Overview. And I have Todd McCormick go through the Budget Overview and the drivers.
Thank you, Mr.. So this year, one of our overriding priorities was to try to focus on how we could reallocate the amount of money that we were paying as a district for the bond for the past 20...
Twenty-five years?
Twenty. Twenty years. To, and direct it towards capital improvements. If you haven't seen the capital improvement list, it's long, it's extensive, and it's expensive, and it goes for many years out. And to stave off going to the public for a bond again, we decided collaboratively, as the Budget Committee and with the School Board, to try and refocus that money towards targeted capital improvements for next year, and hopefully we can continue this every year, to try to pay it in chunks over time as opposed to go and float a huge bond. So that being said, the 2019-2020 voted budget was $73,78,676. Our proposed budget is $73,975, or $73,975,000. That's a net change of $896,324, or 1.23% increase. Now, keep in mind that includes the teacher contracts. It also includes about $1.9 million in capital improvements that we have built into the budget. Yes, it does include losing the bond payment, but like I just said, we were trying to reallocate that money and think fiscally conservative over a course of time as opposed to doing the bond, doing a bond. So some of the major budget increases over $25,000. Salaries are up $918,703. Site and building projects, $837,200. Tuition, $818,644. Professional services, $327,764. SAU services, $158,990. Equipment, $146,867. Miscellaneous expenses, $115,250. Workers' comp, $68,388. Some of the major budget decreases greater than $25,000. Telephone is down $49,999. Utilities, energy, down $109,195. Repair and maintenance, down $113,634. Teacher retirement, down $200,000. Group insurance, down $394,959. Just a, just a point on those two. Part of the process was we didn't want to touch capital, but we wanted to reduce the budget to make it as close as last year as possible. And one of the ways we did that was we went to Mr. Dowd and we said, you know, we'd like you to find a way to, let's find a way to find another million without touching capital so that we can stick to our mission of having these capital improvements built into, into next year's proposed budget. And we went line through line, through the budget. We looked at past trends, going back four years, looking at voted versus expended, and for those particular lines right there, without any elimination of positions, we asked Mr. Dowd to go a little lower in the increase percentage that he had been calculating for those particular lines in the 2900 group, without touching salaries. And he was able to do that. And then finally, the bond principal and interest was, decreased $1,642,000.
Up next is Salary and Benefit Budget by Object Code. And Alan is going to read this portion.
Salary benefits and budget by object code. One XX total salaries, 2020, 2021 proposed, $35,964,512, increase of $918,703. Object code 210, group insurance, 2020, 21 proposed, $9,845,201, a decrease of $394,959. Object code 220, social security contribution, $2.5, $2,549,900, a decrease of $306. Object code 21, non-teacher retirement, $799,000, oh, 2020, 2021 proposed, $799,528, a decrease of $276. Object code 232, teacher retirement, $4,622,648, a decrease of $200,000. Object code 240, tuition reimbursement, $211,507, zero, zero increase. Zero change. Object code 250, unemployment compensation, $30,000, zero change. Object code 260, workers' comp, $261,358, a increase of $68,058. Object code 290, other employment benefits, $35,000, zero change. Subtotal salaries and benefits, $54,496,53, an increase of $391,521. Object code 450, construction service buildings, $1,768,200, a increase of $837,200. Object code 56, tuitions, 2020, 21 proposed, $3,279,844, $818,644,000 increase. Object code 320, 340, professional services, $1,616,752, a increase of $327,644. Object code 310, official administration services, 220, 21 proposed, $1,800,315,000, an increase of $158,990. Object code 73, equipment, 2020, 21 proposed, $632,127, an increase of $146,867. Object code 880, 890, miscellaneous expense, 2020, 21 proposed, $219,640, an increase of $115,250. Supply, 610, supplies, 2020, 21 proposed, $1,263,915, an increase of $24,799. Object code 410, water sewer septic, 2020, 21 proposed, $58,000, an increase of $18,000. 810, dues and fees, 220, 21 proposed, $76,293, an increase of $1,474. Object code 550, painting.
Printing.
I'm sorry. Printing. 2020, 21 proposed, $12,795, an increase of $200. 930, fraud transfer, fund transfers, 220, 21 proposed, $2,777,500, zero change. Objective code 540, advertising, 220, 21 proposed, $4,000, zero change. Object code 490, other purchases, property services, 2020, 21 proposed, $5,001, zero 420, cleaning services, 220, 21 proposed, $123,500, zero change. Object code 519, student transportation, 2020, 21 proposed, $3,538,483, a decrease of $233. Object code 390, game, game expense, 2020, 21 proposed, $82,200, a decrease of $2,249. Object code 520, insurance, 2020, 21 proposed, $209,440, a decrease of $3,856. Object code 534, postage, 2020, 21 proposed, $300, a difference from 2009, a decrease of $5,000. Object code 42X, snow removal, 2020, 21 proposed, $10,000, a decrease of $5,000. 580, travel workshop, 2020, 21 proposed, $44,911, a decrease of $5,905. Object code 64X, 650 books, info resources, 2020, 21 proposed, $926,551, a decrease of $7,313. 53X, telephone and communication, 2020, 21 proposed, $150,481, a decrease of $49,090. Object code 62, utilities and energy, proposed 2020, 21 proposed, $862,600, a difference, I'm sorry, a decrease of $109,095. 43X, repair and maintenance, proposed 2020, 21 proposed, $468,625, a decrease of $113,634. Object code 830, 910, bond principal and interest, zero, a difference of $1,642,000, zero. Subject expenses, 2020, 21 proposed, $19,925,347, a increase of $504,803. A total proposed budget for 2020, 21, $73,975, a difference of 806, an increase of $896,324.
Thank you very much, Alan. So that was our quick overview of our budget process and some of our information. So now I'm going to look for public comment on the proposed operating budget. And if anybody has any questions, I would ask you to come forward to the two microphones, state your name, town, and ask away. Going once, going twice, gone. The next part of the presentation is going to be regarding the default budget. So just quickly for the people in the audience or people at home, the Budget Committee focuses on the proposed budget, and the School Board's task is to develop the default budget. So at this time, regarding the default budget, I'm going to turn this portion over to the School Board Chair, Sean O'Neil. So whatever you have to share on the default budget, we have a bunch of slides here.
What I'm going to do is pass the buck, hang on over to my right for Dr. Farah, for the default budget.
The default budget. Under RSA 40:13, subsection nine, paragraph B, the default budget is defined, as used in the subdivision. Means the amount of the same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized for the previous year, reduced and increased, as the case may be, by debt service contracts and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law, and reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget and by salaries and benefits of positions that have been eliminated in the proposed budget. For the purposes of this paragraph, one-time expenditures shall be appropriations not likely to recur in the succeeding budget, and eliminated positions shall not include vacant positions under recruitment or positions redefined in the proposed operating budget as determined by the governing body, unless the provisions of RSA 40:14-B are adopted of the local political subdivision. In calculating the default budget amount, the governing body shall follow the statutory formula, which may result in a higher or lower amount than the proposed operating budget. RSA 40:13-9C specifies contracts, as used in the subdivision, means contracts previously approved in the amount so approved by the legislative body in either the operating budget authorized for the previous year or in a separate warrant article for previous I'll be reading from the MSDSB, which is the form that goes through the New Hampshire Department of Revenue. Account 1100 to 1199, regular programs. The prior year adopted budget was $19,748,79. There was an increase of $505,662 and a decrease of a one-time appropriation of $65,252 for a default budget of $20,181,289. This increase reflects the TTA 2021 contract increase, and the reduction is a one-time expenditure on new equipment. Lines 1200 to 1299 are special programs. The prior year adopted budget was $9,835,276. There was an increase of $1,147,737 to bring the default budget to $10,983,013. This increase is reflected as a TTA, Collective Bargaining Association, increase and a required services increase for special programs. Line 1300 to 1399, vocational programs. Prior year adopted budget was $72,000. There's an increase of $38,000 for a default budget of $110,000. This increase is reflective of an increase in required services. Line 1400 to 1499, other programs. The prior year adopted budget was $911,744. The default budget is $911,744, no change. Line 1500 to 1599, non-public programs. All lines are zero. Line 1600 to 1699, adult continuing education programs. Prior year adopted budget, $197,916. Default budget, $197,916. Line 1700 to 1799, community junior college education programs. Zero on all lines. 1800, community service programs. Zero on all lines. The subtotal for instruction is $30,757,815 in the prior year adopted budget. There are increases of $1,691,399 and a decrease of $65,252 to bring that line to $32,383,962. Support services, line 2000 to 2199, student support services. Prior year adopted budget, $3,432,857. There's an increase of $72,907, a decrease of $9,250. The default budget is $3,496,514. That change reflects a TTA, Collective Bargaining Association, increase and a decrease of a one-time expenditure on equipment. Line 2200 to 2299, instructional staff services. Prior year adopted budget, $1,276,105. Reduction of $43,684 and a reduction of a one-time appropriation... Reduction of forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-four and a reduction of a one-time appropriation of two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five. The default budget is one million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-six. That change is a result of a CBA increase, a contractual obligation decrease and a one-time expenditure on equipment. The support services subtotal is for the prior year, four million, seven hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two. The default budget is four million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, one four zero. Collective bargaining under general administration, those lines are zero. Line twenty-three-ten, school board contingency, all lines are zero. Line twenty-three-ten, twenty-three-nineteen, other school board. The prior year adopted budget was two twenty-eight, two twenty-one. The default budget is two twenty-eight, two twenty-one. Executive administration, line two-three-two-zero, SAU management services. Prior year adopted budget, one million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. There's an increase of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. The default budget will be one million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen. That's reflective of an increase in the SAU budget. Line twenty-three-twenty, twenty-three ninety-nine, all other, all other administration. The prior year adopted budget was five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four seventy-five. There's an increase of one thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The default budget is five hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four. Hang on, I have to look here. Twenty-three-twenty. That reflects a TTA collective bargaining association increase on that line. Line twenty-four hundred to twenty-four ninety-nine, school administrative services. Prior year adopted budget, three million, three hundred and three thousand, six hundred and seventy-three. Default budget, three million, three hundred and three thousand, six seventy-three. Line twenty-five hundred to twenty-five ninety-nine, business. Fifty-five thousand in the prior year adopted budget, fifty-five thousand in the default budget. Line twenty-six hundred to twenty-six ninety-nine, plant operations and maintenance. Three million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, seventy-six dollars in the prior year adopted budget. There's a decrease of five thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. This brings the default to three million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twenty. That is due to a decrease in Primex. Line twenty-seven hundred to twenty-seven ninety-nine, student transportation. Prior year adopted budget, three million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. There's a decrease of two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars. The default budget is three million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-three. This is reflective of a net contractual decrease in that line. Line twenty-eight hundred to twenty-nine ninety-nine, supportive services, central and other. That line is nineteen million, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. There's a decrease of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. The default budget is eighteen million, five hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. That decrease is due to, um, an insurance decrease. Um, the FICA calculated in the operating budget, the retirement is calculated in the operating budget and the TTA, CBA increase netted against level funding. And also the primer, Primex workers' comp increase. The subtotal for the executive administration is thirty-one million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. This is a decrease in the default of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-two thousand. The default budget for the executive administration subtotal will be thirty-one million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. Non-instructional services, line thirty-one hundred, food service operations. Zero prior year and default. Thirty-two hundred, enterprise operations. Zero prior year adopted and zero in the default. We're almost, we're over two-thirds of the way through. Following along. No, no, I'm good, I'm almost done. Facilities acquisition and construction. Line forty-one hundred, site acquisition, zero prior year adopted, zero in the default. Forty-two hundred, site improvement. One hundred thousand in the prior year adopted budget, a hundred thousand in the default. The next three lines, forty-three hundred, forty-four hundred, forty-five hundred are all zero in the prior year adopted and the default budget. Those lines include architectural and engineering, educational specific development, specification development, building acquisition and construction. Line forty-six hundred, building improvement services. The prior year adopted budget was nine hundred and thirty-one thousand. There's a decrease of a one-time appropriation of five hundred and thirty-one thousand for a default budget of four hundred thousand. That one-time appropriation of five hundred and thirty-one thousand is reflective of the money that was authorized by the voters for repair of the PAC wall and that was taken out of the district's capital reserve fund, but it is included as part of the prior year operating budget. Other outlays, um, line fifty-one-ten, debt service principal. The prior year adopted budget was one point six million. There's a reduction of one point six million, we have paid off the bond, so the default budget is reduced to zero. Line fifty-one-twenty, did I hear applause? Oh, sorry. Um, line fifty-one-twenty, debt service interest. Forty-two thousand in the prior year adopted budget. That also goes away when the bond is paid off, so there's a reduction of forty-two thousand and that line is zero. So other outlays subtotal is now zero. Um, in terms of the, the, um, default appropriation, fund transfer lines, these are typically offset by revenue. Line fifty-two-twenty to fifty-two-twenty-one, which is deferred food service. Prior year adopted budget is one point four million, the default budget is one point four million. Five-two-two-two to five-two-two-nine, to other special revenue. One point three seven seven, five hundred, one million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred in the prior year adopted budget. The default budget remains the same at one million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred. There are several other lines here that I'll read off. All these lines in the prior year adopted budget were zero and they're all zero in the default budget. Those lines are fifty-two-thirty to fifty-two-thirty-nine, capital projects. Fifty-two-fifty-one, which is a fund transfer to capital reserve. Fifty-two-fifty-two to expendable trust or fiduciary funds. Fifty-two-fifty-three to non-expendable trust funds. Fifty-two-fifty-four to agency funds. Fifty-three-hundred to fifty-three ninety-nine, intergovernmental agency allocations. Nine-nine-nine-zero supplemental appropriation. Nine-nine-nine-two deficit appropriation. The fund transfer subtotals are two million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars in pro, the prior year and the default budget. The total operating budget appropriations for the prior year adopted budget was seventy-three million, seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-six. There are reductions of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred. There are one-time appropriations that have been reduced of six hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven for a default budget total of seventy-two million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. I'll open the floor for public comment on the default budget.
Also let the public know that a full copy of this presentation will be made available on the district website.
Um, Mr. Chair, I, the superintendent just told me that this budget is already posted to the district website for all the people that would like to view it.
Right.
If there are no questions on the default budget, I'll turn it back over to the board chair to turn it back over to the budget committee chair.
Okay. It's a copy of our revenue budget, shows the money that has come in over the last three years. At this point, I'm not going to read over every single line here. I'm going to go right to the very bottom and give you the summary. It talks about the total income, the district assessment, and then the total. So what it's saying is if you, if you look at this chart, our in, you'll see that our income is slowly declining. Uh, so that number is seventeen million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three. I'm on the bottom right hand of the page. The district assessment, this is what our four towns have to raise through our property taxes. This number is, uh, increasing each year as the income from state and federal is decreasing. That number is fifty-seven million, nine hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-four for a total of seventy-five million, eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So you can just follow the trend over the last one, two, three, three years. Are there any questions on the revenue? Dr. Farah.
Can I just ask a clarifying point? Um, and I think this was rather surprising to me. When we look at the state revenue under building aid, line thirty-two-ten, that was previously in the one point one million dollar range, we're now looking at a number of zero. My understanding is that we continue to receive building aid of approximately a million dollars a year until the bond payment was paid off, is that correct? So that, that's caused a substantial decrease in our revenue, so essentially we were paying around
Six hundred.
One point six for the bond, but we were getting one million back.
That's correct.
So, um, this was rather surprising, for me anyway.
I think it was surprising for a lot of people. So any, um, any other comments on the revenue portion of the budget? So the good news is our bond is paid off. So the next part is to go through all the warrant articles. These warrant articles are developed by, uh, the school board and administration. I'll just read them. Shall the voters of the Timberlane Regional School District raise and appropriate up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be placed into the school building construction, reconstruction, capital improvement and land purchase capital reserve fund established in nineteen ninety-six with such amount to be transferred from those funds in the June thirtieth, twenty twenty, unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July one of this year, which were appropriated as capital expenses in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty in accordance with Article Six of the Timberlane Regional School District Articles of Agreement. No amount to be raised by additional taxation. Somebody should have put a period in there somewhere. That is Article Three. Are there any questions on Article Three's capital reserve fund? Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of points of clarification to the public. This is a fund that's been in place for a number of years. The current balance in the, uh, capital reserve, um, is one million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Just a few of the projects that the school district has used some of those funds for have been kitchen renovations at a, at a couple of our schools. Um, some special ed space, uh, at the middle school a number of years ago, uh, used some of those funds. There have been some roofing work done. Um, there've been some kindergarten, uh, refurbishing classrooms, uh, back i- in the early two thousands. Uh, and now we're, uh, using that, some of that money to, uh, go ahead and fix the PAC wall. And there's a beautiful presentation out in the foyer, if you'd like to see some of those materials. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other, uh, comments on the capital reserve fund? If not, I'm going to move to Article Four. Article Four, three-year collective bargaining agreement for the Timberlane Support Staff Union. Shall the voters of the Timberlane Regional School District approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Timberlane Support Staff Union and the Timberlane Regional School Board, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year. The estimated increase in twenty twenty-one is going to be three hundred and five thousand, six hundred and forty-four. The following year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, two hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one. And the following year, the last year of the, uh, the agreement, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The three-year total, seven hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and six dollars. And to further, let me just make sure I get this piece here. To further raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and five thousand, six hundred and forty-four for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Such sum representing additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at the current staffing level, levels. Majority vote required. This is recommended by the school board, nine, uh, zero, zero. The intent, this article will allow the school district to enter into a successor three-year contract with the Timberlane Support Staff Union. The purpose contract ratified by the union and the school board represents a two-point-five percent increase in the salary schedule for one year, three-point-five percent increase in the scheduled salary for year two, and a three-point-five percent increase in the salary schedule in year three. Pardon me?
No, no, that, that's okay, the change was, uh, was made to the slideshow, which I don't think is reflected in the course presentation.
The, the numbers on the screen are correct for the, we have the old data.
We're having a little discrepancy in the paper handouts here, so just bear with us for a minute. So I'm going to, I'm going to refer to Jeff. The numbers on the screen, what I just read are correct.
Yes.
The handouts that are in front of the board members up here, they're not correct.
Would you read those three numbers again, the percentages?
It's two-point-five percent for the first year, three-point-five percent for the second and third year.
Are, are the dollar figures the same in both?
I'm going to have to go back to Jeff. The dollar amounts, I've just gone back a couple of slides. There were three hundred and five thousand, six forty-four. In year one, year two, two forty, two hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one. Third year, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight. Public comment on the three-year collective bargaining agreement, are there any? Alan, did you have your hand up? No. Okay. Anybody in the audience? I see none. Article Five. Shall the voters of the Timberlane Regional School District, if Article Four is defeated, authorize the Timberlane Regional School Board to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Four cost items only. Majority vote required. This was recommended unanimously by the school board. Article Six. Middle school roof maintenance and repair. Shall the voters of the Timberlane Regional School District raise and appropriate five hundred thousand dollars for maintenance and repairs of the Timberlane Regional Middle School Roof as referenced in the Timber, Timberlane Regional School District Capital Improvement Plan. The special warrant article will be non-lapsing appropriation per RSA thirty-two, colon, seven, section six, and will not, and will not lapse until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Majority vote required. This is, uh, recommended by the school board unanimously. Ms. Chairman. Yes, Brian?
I just want to, uh, put an extra plug in for this article. Obviously, the people in front of the room here are recommending that public support the proposed budget. In a situation where the budget does not pass and we enter default, we recognize the need of improvements in our buildings. So we ask the people to, this is the first time this board has done something like this. If the proposed budget does not pass, we're asking the, the vote- If the proposed budget does not pass, we're asking the voters to spend at least five hundred thousand towards our maintenance. We're long overdue for this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else on Article Six? Seeing no more, I'm going to put Article Seven. Article Seven is withdrawal from SAU fifty-five. Shall the Timberlane Regional School District accept the provisions of RSA one ninety-four C, providing for the withdrawal from a school administrative unit involving the school districts of Timberlane Regional and Hampstead in accordance with the provisions of the proposed plan? This requires a three-fifths majority vote. This was recommended by the school board with a seven to two vote. Are there any comments on the withdrawal? Dr. Farah.
I served as the chair of the withdrawal committee. The withdrawal committee was formed per RSA. The plan was developed over the course of the summer with representatives from the school board, the budget committee, also representatives from each town. The superintendent was on the committee as a non-voting member. The plan was drafted, revised. We had legal counsel for the school board, not for the committee per se. The plan was presented to the State Board of Education. That plan has been approved by the State Board of Education. In the documents for public hearing and deliberative, you will see that the state has approved that plan. So this is, RSA is, prescribes the wording for this warrant article.
Dr. Farah, just for the record, not by name, but can you just give it like an indication of who was on the committee? Residents, board members?
For board members, I was on the committee, and Jen Silva from Atkinson was on the committee. John Hughes from Danville was a representative. For the budget committee, Barbara Kiska was a representative from Plastow. Sabrina Alberg was a representative from Danville. Mark Sherwood was a representative from Sandown. Karen Steele was a representative from Atkinson.
Thank you.
I want to commend them, I'm sorry, for all their work over the summer. We spent almost every single week meeting over the summer in order to get this done by the deadline, so I thank all those committee members.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments on the withdrawal, the article for the withdrawal from SAU fifty-five? Seeing none? Article Eight, general acceptance of reports. Shall the voters of the Timberlane Regional School District accept reports of agents, auditors, and committees as written in the two thousand nineteen annual report? Majority vote required. This was recommended by the school board unanimously. Are there any questions on general acceptance of reports? I see none. Article Nine, expendable trust fund for withdrawal by petition. If Article Seven, withdrawal from SAU five, is approved, shall the Timberlane Regional School District raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars to fund a new expendable trust fund and to authorize the Timberlane School Board to use slash transfer money from this fund to pay Timberlane's share of ongoing healthcare liabilities of retired SAU fifty-five employees? Are there any comments on Article Nine? Okay. Moving on to Article Ten. Funding for transition in preparation for withdrawal from SAU fifty-five by petition of Rob Collins. If withdrawal from SAU fifty-five is approved, shall the voters of the Timberlane Regional School District raise and appropriate one hundred thousand dollars to fund the recommended transition period defined in the SAU fifty-five withdrawal plan by the SAU fifty-five withdrawal planning committee? Are there any comments on this? Sheila.
I hate to do this, Mr. Metzger, but Article Nine was not done by the school board. I believe that's also a petition of a citizen.
Article Nine is a citizen's petition. Do we know who? Pardon me? Do we know who the petitioner is?
It doesn't say on there.
Jeff, do you have the, the author of the petition?
I don't have a petition. You asked that question. Do you just take the first name?
It has it on Article Ten.
But it looks like it's, yeah. It looks like it's a petition done by the board.
It says by petition. It says by petition, which signifies it's a citizen's.
Dr. Metzger.
Yeah, we, in terms of the wording, and Kathy Belch is here, we asked that question of legal. Do we just take the first name? Is it automatically the first name on the first sheet? And we were told that it's not required to put the person's name. I do believe Article Ten, they say, well, in Article Ten, the person's name's there. I think that was the request of the petitioner. Excellent. So that name was embedded in the article, but in Nine it was not, I guess, and that was the answer we got. So we just, we just presented him as for legal. I don't know if that explains it. Thank you.
Dr. Farah.
And just one point to clarify for anybody in the public that might be watching this, a little, I have heard some misinformation in regards to withdrawal. This is a withdrawal from SAU fifty-five. SAU is essentially the management organization that employs between twelve to fourteen people that are primarily responsible for the overall education and financial management of the two districts, Timberlane and Hampstead. This would not pertain to any certain town or anything leaving. This, this would, Timberlane would continue to exist as it always has. It would become a single district SAU, which means that Hampstead would not participate in any decisions of the SAU. SAU fifty-five, Timberlane would withdraw, Hampstead would continue as SAU fifty-five. Should this pass, the state would then assign a new number to the Timberlane SAU. Timberlane would continue to exist as Timberlane.
Mr. Beelow.
May I ask the
Can you go to the microphone?
May I ask the school board's attorney if one of the things Dr. Farah mentioned is true? Does, will Hampstead continue to be called SAU fifty-five, or would they be assigned a new number, or do we not know?
My understanding from reading many, many withdrawal reports is that the district that remains continues as that SAU, and the district that withdraws is now assigned a new SAU number.
Okay, like, as I said
And the superintendent is confirming that, Mr. Beelow.
May I ask your attorney, or not?
Jim, do you have an answer?
I agree with Kim.
Okay. Easy enough. All right, so this all started, Sheila, you had a statement which was that Article Nine was a, not from the school board, it was a citizen's petition.
It's a citizen's petition, that's all I wanted to make sure.
Okay. So are you satisfied with that?
Yes, I am, thank you.
And then Article Ten is also a citizen's petition. So I just want to make sure we're clear, are there any additional questions on Article Ten, funding of the transition? Seeing none? Special meetings. The budget committee will meet immediately following this public hearing to finalize the proposed budget for deliberative session. Again, deliberative session will be February sixth, right here at the PAC. The school board will also meet subsequently to review the warrant articles into Kentucky to conduct board business. We believe both of them are going to meet here either stage or in one of the rooms, but they're right here in this building. Deliberative session, Thursday, February sixth, two thousand twenty. It's going to be seven PM in the high school gymnasium. Voter check-in opens at six in the high school cafeteria. And that concludes our public hearing. Thank you very much for attending.